Those two zones. So in the next five years, that's two and a half new schools to be, that could be utilized, that could be filled by twenty fourth, twenty twenty-four. These are all of the numbers behind what I just told you. I just draw your attention to the highs, highlights, which is Heritage Rose with almost four thousand resident students at the end of this projection period, and also Leonetti with almost twenty-three hundred resident students at the end of this projection period. But importantly, in five years, by twenty twenty-four, we've got twenty-three hundred at Heritage Rose and almost seventeen hundred at Leonetti. This table is similar to previous years, just to get you a little bit oriented, shows enrollment projected in, or current and projected enrollment for this year and next year in the first two columns, and that's in, including all of the transfers that happen between schools. And these are the numbers that staff is using for short-term planning for next year that you'll hear about later. All of these blue numbers in the later years are projected resident students. So you cannot compare this column of twenty twenty for next fall with these future because the future numbers are resident students only. The next, again, this is just the rest of the elementary schools, and so I draw your attention to a few up in, I mentioned the Northwest with its, with its cluster of yellow schools, the slightly overcrowded schools. That includes Neil and also Patterson, Patterson with the, the Lakeview Retreat and other developments. At the middle school level, again, we have the heat map showing similar colors, so to speak. In the Northwest, the, the growth is spread between basically three middle schools, Garcia, Bowie, and Crockett, but in the South, of course, it's all concentrated in Thornton. Not, not a surprise. Again, this is the utilization map. Bowie and Garcia are both projected to be at, over, Garcia with seventeen hundred students in the, at the ten-year period, and Bowie with just over two thousand students. But Thornton takes the cake with twenty-seven hundred students projected in ten years. That's a hundred and fif- eighty-three percent utilization of Thornton. That's basically two middle schools in the far southeast in ten years. These are the numbers behind that. So here is the twenty-seven hundred students projected in Thornton. But importantly, in five years, almost nineteen hundred students in Thornton. Just to give you a, a sense of the, the timing there. And then finally, at the high school level, again, the heat maps of projected growth. In the Northwest, the growth is distributed between Bush and Travis, a little bit in Austin, on the very edge of Austin. But no surprise to anyone, the, the bulk of the long-term growth in the southeast is all in Ridge Point High School. And of course, the opening of High School Twelve will, is, has been planned to accommodate that projected growth. And so we have the numbers here behind the high school heat map, and Ridge Point is, is our winner with almost, well, about thirty-eight hundred students in twenty twenty-two if High School Number Twelve were not to be opened. So clearly illustrating the need for the next high school with fifty-four hundred students projected to live in Ridge Point at the end of this projection period. So you've been very patient. And with that, Justin, I invite Justin to come back up here, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you both for the presentation. Mrs. Haley, you have a question?
Thank you for the presentation. So, and maybe not tonight, but could you provide me more of an update of the differential between what happened, what we showed the last time versus what I'm seeing today? I, I, I know you all pointed out some areas in the heat map, but, in the heat map, but I'm not sure from my reference, I need to understand the magnitude of change. Okay, so.
Compared to last year's projections?
Compared to last year's projections. And then, in, in the tables, you told me I couldn't compare the blue with the projected enrollment for twenty twenty, is that what you said? So what should I be comparing it to? Current enrollment of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
At one point, we used to include the residents, the current and next year projected resident students in those tables. And then we had some feedback that that was too confusing. So we have left, left out the resident, projected resident numbers per school. However, if, if you would like that information, I can certainly, can certainly send it.
So, 'cause I'm not clear then on what I'm looking at then. How can I, how can I compare and?
Okay, so the current number of students living in each school and the, or school attendance zone, and the number of students projected to live in that attendance zone next year have been excluded from these tables because they were different from the current enrollment and projected enrollment. And the short-term uses of this data were, were more interested in enrollment. How many kids are going to be at the school? We need to plan for that. We need to hire staff. And so we have that, the, the number of resident students currently in our database, it has not been included in this table, but I can certainly send it very easily.
So then, I guess it sounds like the answer to my question is that I'm should be comparing this blue somewhat to the current enrollment?
You can compare all the blue numbers to each other. Those are all resident. So the blue numbers for twenty-one, for twenty-nine.
Can I ask a question to clarify? So the, the current enrollment and the projected enrollment include programs, like if there's an academy or a, some type of special program, and the blue numbers do not, thinking that maybe the program could move or could be disbanded or something, or changed, or?
We project where people are going to live. But for the short term, you need to know where those kids are transferring. But for a long term, we can't assume that those programs will stay at those campuses.
So, let me think, if that makes sense to me. So the projec- the projections are the students that are available, in a sense?
Projected enrollment is how many students we project to show up at the school, to register at school next year.
Regardless of program, regardless of program, including the programs?
For next year.
Okay, so then I can compare that to my current enrollment?
Yes, you can compare enrollment to enrollment, yes.
So I.
Because if, because if right now I have program A, B, and C at a school, right? And if you're telling me that your, your, my project, my projected numbers are based on the current programs being at that current school, and you're putting these students to show up in twenty-one, twenty-two with those current programs, then that's the projected compared to my current enrollment?
In twenty-one, twenty-two, we can't make any assumptions about the programs.
So I think what she's saying is, you, your projected enrollment in twenty twenty, which is the numbers in red, include the programs, include the students who may be transferred in for programs. But every projected number after that does not. So the blue numbers do not, the red numbers do. So the blue numbers are strictly the kids that live in that school zone. Not any, not inclusive of any kids who are in programs or who have transferred in.
Okay, so.
Is that right?
Is that right?
That's, that's correct. Columns, this column and this column can be compared directly to each other. That's the growth that you, or decline that you can expect to happen from the kids that are enrolled at this year's snapshot to next year's snapshot.
So then how do I project then? I guess I need, I need a little bit more data to sh- to show the difference between the last PASA projections, so I can see what kind of delta we're looking at, which, what changes? Because this is going, this is going to impact, you know, zoning and schools, locations and those kind of things. So if you can help me by providing that to me after the meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. Then that, that way I can see what has totally changed, okay?
Sure, and I have that information here. If you have specific questions, or we can provide it all to you later.
Well, I can't, I need to look at it so I can study it, and then I'll be able to provide you some, some answers. Because what, what, what was our projections for the Heritage Rose Leonetti area?
Those have increased a lot. Let's see. And a lot of that is because the plans for those developments have solidified. This time last year, we knew something was coming. We didn't necessarily know their timeline. So you compare this year's projections for twenty twenty-eight compared to last year's projections for twenty twenty-eight. Heritage Rose is eleven hundred students higher now than we thought it would be last year. And Leonetti is three hundred and thirty students higher.
And per our ed specs, we're allowed to have how many students, what's that, a hundred percent for our, for our schools, our current ed specs? Is it twelve hundred?
So it, it varies per campus, based on the footprint of the campus. But then within that, I'll let Oscar, I'll defer to him for that response, specific to Heritage Rose and other campuses. But within that, we have the use of the design capacity and the utilization factor, where we take an eighty-five percent utilization factor to ensure that if the school is built for a thousand students, we're not saying a thousand students fit in the school, but I think it's, it goes down to eight hundred and fifty. Is that accurate?
Yeah, because Ms., Dr. Pati- I can't see it, sorry. She stated that we could build, have two or three more schools in this area. So that's why I wanted to understand, per ed spec, what are we looking at?
So elementaries, we're designing eight fifty with a thousand core. The last few that we've built, we've gone ahead and come to y'all and built them for a thousand based on the projections that we were seeing. So we, we've already built them out. Like Malala, we went ahead and built it out for a thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for the presentation. Moving along to our twenty twenty-one annual enrollment review and facilities master plan update. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, sir. So this is our natural extension, and I'm just going to do a brief introduction to this piece because this is really the beginning of a new day, if you will, in Fort Bend. Because since this time last year, the board updated Policy FC Local to incorporate the new School Boundary Oversight Committee. So really, this meeting and this presentation sets the meter running now on our work going forward for long-range planning. And I wanted to point that out because we historically, you know, in my seven-year, ten-year in the district, we've, we, I think we've done a good job, and we've really built excellent systems. But we've also been refining over the years how we engage the community, how we project, how we plan for school. So I think we're at a place now engaging the SBOC that we're going to be being even much more effective than we have been historically. And I think the data you have now is going to show longer-range planning, a more mindful attitude toward near-term and longer-term planning that is going to tie perfectly into the reports you've just seen. So I'm going to turn this over to Beth to go ahead and kick that off as well.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. So this evening, we're following the same format that we have in the past, but it's very different, as Dr. Dupree shared, in the work that's ahead of us. This is that reset point. You heard some information from Dr. Tapera and from Mr. Silhavy this evening. And I just want to expand on that. And as we think about our underutilized campuses and our overutilized campuses and how we look at that data, in addition to how we've been engaging with the community and how we will be engaging moving forward, it's a very different process, and it's a tighter, more formal process that will still allow for that feedback from the community and that input around particular recommendations while valuing the data over time and being able to charge the School Boundary Oversight Committee, or I'll refer to as the SBOC through this presentation, with the review of that data to, to put plans in place, help staff to put plans in place that will better manage that underutilization over time as well as our overutilization. And as you reflected, reviewed on the report, reviewed the reports and reflected on them prior to this board meeting, I know from the questions that we received from trustees, you too noticed the significant underutilization in many of our campuses across the ten-year planning horizon, as well as those hotspots that the PASA projection touched on. And so as we continue through this evening, I'll also highlight those schools for you with specific strategies that we're putting in place for the twenty twenty-one school year, along with the updates to the twenty eighteen facility master plan that was, that led to the, the work of our twenty eighteen bond. What's different in the policy that you all approved in May, our FC Local policy, is that now we come to you in February with not only the PASA demographic report and our annual enrollment review, but also the update to the facility master plan, lining out those areas that we need to focus on and the work ahead so that we're, we're always looking ten years out in a very specific and an intentional manner. You will notice a difference in the plan as well in terms of the long, long-range considerations as we built a three-year plan that really focuses the work of the School Boundary Oversight Committee in those particular hotspots and, and cold spots. So as we are always guided in this process by two very important policies. Policy CT Local is for the planning of efficient and effective use of district assets. And this policy guides us to, to feed this work into the bond planning process and the capital planning process. And then, as I referenced in great detail already, Policy FC Local and the changes to that policy that really lay the foundation of this work moving forward. This year, again, we reviewed PASA's moderate growth projections, and, and we too are looking at, very concerned about some of the underutilized campuses and our overutilized areas, and really reflecting on how did we get to this point? And how can we ensure as we, as we stand, as I stand before you, sit before you, and, and talk about the School Boundary Oversight Committee, that truly the work of the next five years and ten years out tightens up this process to the extent that we are building schools just in time, at, at the right time, in the right places, and that, and that we're managing enrollment in the best and most prudent possible way so that we can educate our children and innovative schools provide choice programs in areas where we are underutilizing our buildings, and have those tough conversations in areas that we see continued decline in growth with our SBOC and with the board. What do we need to do in terms of consolidating programs or campuses and, and really making some challenging decisions moving forward? As Dr. Dupree shared, you know, this is an art and a science, and a whole lot of art, supported by science with a moving target as, as we think about the economy and the upticks and the declines in, in our economy and the growth or lack thereof in certain areas of the district. So as I move through the presentation, I'll talk about the art, and, and we'll always look for that science to really back up the data that we'll be sharing with you year over year. I, I did share a little bit about this a minute ago in response to a question regarding the ed specs. But I, for the public, I want to reiterate that as we talk through the utilization, we're talking about what is the design capacity of a campus? And the ideal, what we're looking for in terms of utilization at our campuses is for that to fall between eighty percent and a hundred percent. And so as I present this evening, I'm focusing specifically on campus that are above that one hundred percent or fall below the eighty percent. So I just want to, from this, starting out of the gate here, talk about really the specific things that we're going to be putting in place for the twenty twenty-one school year. And we will continue to limit student transfers to our special circumstances that are currently listed in administrative procedures. This year, we engage in a recruitment and retention effort to bring back students who have left our district for charter schools. And you heard some of that information this evening from PASA, as well as retain them when they come back and retain our students here in the district from leaving charter schools. And so we've, we've got to better tell our story and ensure that we're offering innovative and choice programs for students. We are going to be in the twenty twenty-one school year implementing cap and overflow in some of our hottest spots in the district. And the first one that we're recommending to you all is that we cap and overflow from Heritage Rose to Scanlon Oaks Elementary until the opening of Elementary Fifty-four, which is scheduled to open in the twenty twenty-four school year in the Sienna area. That we implement cap and overflow at Sienna Crossing Elementary to Schiff Elementary until the opening of Elementary Fifty-five in the same area. And that we implement cap and overflow to High Tower High School for new students moving into the Ridge Point High School area, attendance area that live outside the established two miles until either the activation of an attendance boundary or the opening of High School Twelve. And I'll talk more in detail about these recommendations as we move forward. Additionally, to continue cap and overflow at Commonwealth Elementary to Settlers Way Elementary until the opening of Elementary Fifty-three, to relocate the Early Intervention Academy, currently housed at Ridgemont Elementary or the ELC, and the ELC, to Quell Valley Elementary. And that's a way to scale the Early Literacy Center at Ridgemont and also better utilize Quell Valley Elementary while allowing the Early Intervention Academy to expand and addressing parent requests to be a more centralized location for that program. And then we'll continue to use or relocate portable classroom buildings to manage both over and underutilization by adding to campuses that need a temporary building or a portable classroom building, and to remove from those that no longer need the portable building. And one specific example I want to highlight is at Sullivan Elementary. Sullivan is an overutilized campus. We, it is built to the new ed specs. And so when you talk about the feeling within the campus, the, the staff and students have, or the staff particularly has shared that, you know, we can manage, we can, we can get by, we can do, and they're doing great things at Sullivan. But the, and it doesn't feel as, as crowded or as tight as some of our campuses that were not built to the new ed specs. But when we think about what we have coming in the future in terms of Elementary Fifty-three and the fact that we will be asking the School Boundary Oversight Committee to review our original recommendations for boundaries in that area in the coming short term, we want to make sure that we, we create the least amount of disruption for students, and we know that we can add portable buildings to that school. The core can support the, the enrichment of students by allowing that extra space so that those spaces that are intended for pull-out and flex spaces can be used as such, and the students can attend classes within those portable buildings. So we'll talk to you about some, some other enhancements that will occur at Sullivan in order to, to enhance that experience for students until we're able to rezone for the opening of Elementary Fifty-three. So specifically focusing in our areas of the three areas of the district, the Northwest area, the Central area, and the Southeast. We'll begin in the Northwest area, our campuses that are projected to have an enrollment over a hundred percent. And you can see that that, even with the activation of the new attendance boundary for Malala, Madden Elementary will remain over a hundred percent for the twenty twenty-one school year. There'll be two portable buildings, bringing the utilization down to a hundred and two. They're actually releasing a portable building because the way, they're, they're only using one portable building now and are planning to, to utilize the building in that way as well. We're able to support Madden through the addition of an assistant principal and the addition of a teacher unit to, to better serve those students there at Madden. And we know that we will have classroom additions coming online, a ten-pack of classroom additions that will help to relieve that overutilization that they are utilizing the portable building to also relieve in the, in the meanwhile. The area, this area of the district, as you know, continues to experience growth and will over the ten-year planning horizon. We'll be working with the SBOC to study both the over and underutilization. As we have hotspots there at Oakland and at Madden, we also have underutilized campuses in the Mission Bend, Mission Glen area, and also at Fleming Elementary. Sagin is another area that will continue to grow over time, not next year to the extent of being over a hundred percent. But when we think about those schools, those elementary schools in particular in that area of the district, we want to draw the attention and the work to looking at the long-term, planning for an additional school, but also making sure that we're balancing enrollment and, and utilizing our buildings while allowing that capacity in those mission schools to accommodate perhaps an early literacy center. We know we need to expand that into other areas of the district. We also know that there's a need in that area of the district. So we do know we have that capacity, and we can place that on our priority list and, and within our district strategic plan to be able to offer students and families in that area that type of programming. Oakland Elementary is another area, as you can see, that will be over a hundred percent for twenty twenty-one. There are currently six portable buildings at Oakland, and this reduces the utilization down to ninety-two point four nine. Both of these schools in this area, along with Neil, could be impacted by the opening of the Fifty-sixth Elementary that we know we need for sure in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, along with the knowledge that the classroom additions at Neil will come online for this fall, the twenty twenty fall. So that really does help at Neil to relieve the, the, the space issues that we had reported and experienced last year. The other area of the district here, or the other area of this part of the district is Travis High School. And while Travis High School is, you know, I guess if we round, it's a hundred and one percent, but a hundred point six two percent with the portable buildings in use there for twenty twenty-one, which are ten of them, we will bring that utilization down to ninety-four point four. This is one of those schools, though, if you just look at the numbers, if you just look at the science of it, you could just move on. And, and I think we've done that in the past and said, well, it's, you know, it's under a hundred or it's right at a hundred, and we have portables. But when you think about the feels like and how they utilize that building, we know that they are experiencing the feeling of overutilization at Travis. We, we get that report often, and I know U.S. Board members do as well. So that's an area of focus for the School Boundary Oversight, for staff and the School Boundary Oversight Committee because staff really needs to look at programming there. We have two academies, and we need to think about the high schools in the area that may be less utilized that we might think about in the, in the near future moving those programs to. And I'm not talking about doing that for the fall of twenty twenty-one, but that is something that needs to be on the list of, of areas of focus for staff moving forward. Another thing to keep in mind as we look at the ten-year horizon, we, you'll see that Walker Station Elementary continues to grow in enrollment while Cornerstone declines. And so this is an area that we want to make sure and pay attention to along with the enrollment projections for Brazos Bend Elementary that will also decrease. This will be an area of study for the School Boundary Oversight Committee during twenty-one, twenty-two to determine how we can better balance enrollment in this area. In terms of underutilization in the Northwest area, I mentioned several of these schools already. We do have some significant low utilization with Mission Bend and Mission Glen. And again, we know that there's a need there for an early literacy center, and we can utilize that capacity that's available there. Okay. So I'll move into the Central area of the district. We have four campuses that will be overutilized. Commonwealth, we will be continuing cap and overflow there. It's important to note about drawback, that while it's at a hundred and two point nine percent utilization, it does decrease over time. And Meadows is going, when they move into their building, they'll be at a hundred and one percent, but then they quickly decline under a hundred percent after that. And let's remember that Meadows has a smaller footprint now with the, the opening of the new campus there. Sullivan, I mentioned that we will be moving in portable buildings and enhancing that experience for students by allowing the use of flexible spacing in those pull-out areas, maker spaces that were intended in the ed specs. For underutilization in this area, similar study, as I mentioned in the North, Northwest portion of the district, we have several campuses that fall below eighty percent at all levels. So I'll draw your attention to Kempner High School there. That's one of our few, one of the high schools in the area that is under. So when you think about the continued growth in the Bush and Austin, and Bush and Travis area, Kempner is an area that will have additional capacity when we, when we think about planning for programs and services for our students. The overutilization in the Southeast area, we heard much about that this evening, and I know that we experienced that. Many of you who are here in the audience and board members have experienced it firsthand. And that continued growth in the Heritage Rose area and the difference in what we, what we saw coming and what we now know is coming, it's, it's important to continue the yearly reconciliation, but work further out than we have been working. We will be capping and overflowing Heritage Rose to Scanlon Oaks. And I just want to point out, when we reflect back on the And I just want to point out, when we reflect back on the work of the, um, of the past and the input from the community. One of the recommendations that, um, that we had reviewed at one point was moving a particular area from Siena Crossing to Scanlon Oaks. And based on feedback and through that process, we ended up not making that the final recommendation. And so we have additional capacity at Scanlon Oaks to accommodate those students from Heritage Rose. But if that's a, a learning point from the past and that as we move forward, we are going to be, um, reliant upon the data. And working through that more formal process with the school boundary oversight committee. Again, I mentioned Siena Crossing will be capped and overflowed to Schiff Elementary that can accommodate, um, those additional students until the opening of the new schools. As we implement cap and overflow, it will be patterned after the cap and overflow at Commonwealth Elementary. Where we begin with a kindergarten cohort, so regardless of where those students live within or outside of that two miles. The kindergarteners will begin at the designated school that they're zoned to attend. With the exception of the option, if they have a, a older sibling that might be beginning at the cap and overflow school. They would have that option to attend with their older sibling. And on the flip of that, any student that would be coming in at another grade level, third grade, for example. If they have a sibling that already attends that school, we would allow for the, for the siblings to attend together. Otherwise, they would be attending the cap and overflow school. Underutilization in the area is significant. When we think about those elementary schools and the planning that we have coming to ramp the, uh, or to fully scale the ELC at Ridgemont. We know what, we will be rezoning, asking the SBOC to rezone the second through fifth grade students in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. As well as implementing the ELC within the Marshall feeder pattern. So looking at that phase in approach that will mirror what has occurred with the Ridgemont Early Childhood Center. I mentioned our work with KESA, which is our outside consulting agency that has worked to recruit and retain students back from charter schools. And this is a, um, a chart that gives you an idea of the implementation of that partnership currently. Over the, over the summer, they focused their work on fourteen campuses. And within that work, um, they had a goal to recruit between fifty-six and a hundred and seven students back to Fort Bend schools. They went door to door, they made phone calls, they engaged in targeted marketing efforts. And in that summer work, they were able to recruit back ninety-one students to the district for this school year. And to put in perspective, that represents five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And they continue their work across the district. You'll notice there, those that are targeted for recruitment and those that are targeted for retention, some are both. Because some we have students leaving and others we know we have a fo- a risk of students leaving, so we focus on that retention effort. So at a glance, um, you will, you have more detailed information in the two thousand and twenty update to the two thousand and eighteen facilities master plan. As you all approved in policy FC local, we will make any necessary revisions to that plan. And then bring it back by June of this year for your consideration. The work of the SBOC for this year will be engaged around a review of the demographic report, this annual enrollment review. And guiding them through policy FC local and the procedures so that in the fall of two thousand and twenty, they can begin their work on. The boundaries associated with the full-scale implementation of the early literacy center at Ridgemont and establishing boundaries for High School Twelve. As we think about this work, um, again, I already covered this, they'll be reviewing all the work that we're, um, sharing with you this evening. And begin that boundary work in the fall for both, um, elementary expansion of ELC and the high school. And then over the next few years, the SBOC will look at that five-year planning horizon. I'll draw your attention again to that three-year planning timeline within the update to the facilities master plan. And, and let you know that that will cover the hotspots and the cold spots that we talked about this evening. As well as any boundaries needed for the opening of new schools, um, that are planned now and projected for future bond work. So again, in a nutshell and summary, we are going to limit student transfers, recruit and retain students, implement cap and overflow at three schools. Continue at Commonwealth until the opening of Elementary Fifty-Three. Move that Early Intervention Academy from Ridgemont to Quell Valley. And, um, use or relocate portable classrooms. That's detailed within the facilities master plan. But, um, again, drawing your attention specifically to Sullivan and how we'll mitigate that overutilization at Sullivan until the opening of Elementary Fifty-Three. I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Tosin.
Thank you, Mr. Verdean. So I want to start by saying thank you to Beth and Anthony for all your work. And to the members of the school boundary oversight committee. It's a lot of data, it's a lot of hard work and, um, these are hard decisions as trustees who sit up here know. It's, it's not easy to project and then it's not easy to make the decisions about moving people's kids or moving programs. Or dealing with over, uh, utilization or underutilization. So, so we appreciate your work on that. I'm gonna start by expressing what is going to be expressed to me if I'm not already getting emails from the Siena community. We just rezoned the kids out of Schiff into Siena Crossing Elementary and now we are capping and overflowing back to Schiff. So that's not really a question, I, I guess, um, I'm, you know, it's, I guess it's disappointment, frustration. So one of my questions is, have we considered allowing students who are attending Siena Crossing Elementary? To opt to go back to Schiff? Up to a certain percentage. I mean, I understand that we can't just let them go and have a mass exodus. But there may be kids who want to go back to Schiff. Have we considered that?
We have not. We can certainly discuss that and I would say that your concerns are valid and understood. And part of the, the, the planning that we need to correct and the way that we need to do things better. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, Siena's been growing rapidly and of course, we've got this now. That we see that all the developments down five twenty-one are finally kicking off. I know that that exacerbates the situation. But this shuttling of kids and families, especially at the elementary level is concerning. I, I would appreciate it if you guys would consider that option and have the SBOC consider that option. I happen to have a niece and nephew who were, I zoned from Schiff to Siena Crossing. You know, I don't, I would like to give them that option if they would, um, would want to go back. I think it's something to consider instead of just automatically capping and overflowing because there may be kids. Who live closer to Siena Crossing that, you know, that it makes more sense for them to go there. And if there are other kids that live closer to Schiff who would like to opt back. You know, I don't know how many will take it, but I think we should at least offer them that option. If we, if we're gonna move the Ridgemont Early Intervention Center. To more centralized, centrally located in the district, which I think is a good idea. Are we talking about expanding the Early Literacy Center at Ridgemont? Or I know that we're opening the second one. So I'm just asking, you know, what are, what are we doing with the Early Literacy Center that will stay there?
Yes, ma'am. Um, that is the plan is to expand it. It's in its third year. And so to expand so that the full use of the campus is dedicated to the Early Literacy Center. Which is the, the cause for having the school boundary oversight committee focus on that new boundary for Ridgemont. And the second through fifth graders who will no longer be attending Ridgemont. But would need to be, uh, rezoned to the area of schools within that Willow Ridge feeder pattern to allow for the scaling of the Early Literacy Center. And that would mean that all of those pre-K through first grade students within the Willow Ridge feeder pattern would be attending at Ridgemont.
Well, and I know that I and several of the trustees up here have said this before, but that's a, you know, literacy is our house is on fire kind of thing. So, um, to the extent we can ex- expand it and allow more students, that's certainly something we want to do. So I'm glad that, that that's what we're looking at there. So I'm, I'm equally concerned, or I, or let me just throw this out there because we've talked about this in the past as well. With some of our underutilized schools, we've talked about dual language programs, we've talked about having an elementary GT academy. We've talked about various programming options. Are those still being discussed or, or do we have limitations? Talk to me about that.
If you recall when we, um, shared some of our budget priorities, uh, a month ago, dual language programming is, um, budgeted for. And so we have a scale up to include additional dual language programs. We're gonna begin to scale the one-way and then transition to, uh, and open two-way options as well.
Right, so I remember that, but we didn't specifically talk about locations. And so seeing a lot of the underutilization, especially like in the Blue Ridge Campus and, um, so, you know, some of those other campuses. It seems, uh, especially as we're trying to recruit back, um, students who are leaving the district for charter and private schools. It seems, um, especially in those areas, uh, good, good location. So I just, I, I assume that's what's being considered for placement.
And always open for discussion for elementary GT academy because that's been something that we've talked about as well.
I would add, and I've been, perhaps we need to provide the board a comprehensive update. I think we've referred to it several times. But we've actually done extensive work in both Willow Ridge and Marshall with community groups. And we've got a whole list of programs that we expect to be implementing over the next two to three years.
So that would be helpful, yeah, for us to get that update. Because as we see these underutilization numbers, I mean, that's automatically, I'm sure what all of us are thinking is, okay, what, what program? I mean, y- y- we don't automatically go to rezoning because it's not something that all of us really like to do. But how can we bring programming in to benefit our kids and also, also recruit and retain our students in the district? So I think that would be helpful because what automatically came to mind to me, so moving the Early Intervention Academy into Quell Valley Elementary School. Is centrally located, but if Quell Valley Middle School is our GT academy for, um, middle school. Then doesn't it make sense to put the GT academy for elementary school at Quell Valley Elementary School? Because it's, then it's a natural progression for the students to go from elementary school and then go to the middle school they would attend anyway. I, I mean, that's just my thought process, so. I, I do agree that it needs to be centrally located, but I would hate to take up a school that might naturally fit with some GT programming. Since that's where we've already chosen to put our middle school GT programming.
And we're, we're gonna be studying that because really, and if you think about what's about to happen with the new middle school. And how that's gonna affect like Olympia and Quell Valley, Lantern Lane is right around the corner from all of that in that same area, so. And they're underutilized, so we do have numerous options in that region to do both of these valuable programs.
And that's exactly what I thought of was Lantern Lane. It would be a great kind of middle, it's the central, central in the district. It also has some underutilizations. So, you know, those, you know, those details are for you guys to sort out. But as I think from a governance level, what we're trying to do is protect kids from a lot of shuffling. And so that's why my thought process goes to if we're going to be doing, doing a GT academy at the elementary level. Or if we're even talking about any GT programming, uh, you know, keeping a cohort together makes sense and it's good for kids, so. Just something that I, I think we should be considering as a district. My, I think my last kind of question slash concern, so, you know, I'm looking, I went back and looked at the. The opening dates for elementary schools and our middle schools and particularly in that Siena area that's booming. We've got the two elementary schools projected to open in two thousand and twenty-four. And if I heard correctly, I think Pasta's telling us that the growth at Leonetti and Heritage Rose by two thousand and twenty-four. Is the size of two and a half schools. That's alarming. That's really alarming. So, I mean, I know we don't have funding for that. We, we broke the bond up into two phases. To me, that would be a little bit of an emergency, trying to figure out how to, because it's not like it's just suddenly gonna come up in two thousand and twenty-four. It's gonna build and build and build. What are we gonna do with those kids? And, um, you know, as the, as the SBOC and we're all planning for this. Those, uh, we need at least one of those elementary schools to come online quicker if at all possible.
So let me.
Mr. Perez.
Do you want to address that or go ahead?
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, we have listened and, uh, y'all just gave us approval to go ahead and purchase property for fifty-four. We're doing our due diligence as we speak on that property and hope to come back in about ninety days.
Okay, good. Yes, I know that, so I just want to make sure that we're.
Let me extend what he just said though, because I, I want to make, because we are, I want to be clear that one of the things we're talking about, we're entering into the eighteen-month window. For reimbursement agreements that, before the planned twenty-one bond. So we could be back asking you within the next, as soon as we close on that land to break ground so we can get that elementary opened by two thousand and twenty-two. Much sooner than, because we need it. But I will tell you, I actually talked to, um, Justin Selhavy about this before. Part of our issue in that whole area is the second elementary we need is not even planted yet. And this one, we're right on the heels of them getting it planted. So we're, we're actually moving as quickly as we can in this Siena, Siena area right now. So, and so I think we have a good plan, so that, but we're gonna be looking carefully to help try to get that school under construction as quickly as possible.
Okay, so that's good to hear because two and a half schools worth of growth in the next four years is, is a little bit scary. So thank you guys for moving so quickly and for pushing it through and making sure that our kids have someplace to go. I, I'd like to, I'd like to get an update back on whether we can consider allowing the Siena Crossing kids to transfer back if they want to. I mean, I think that's gonna be important to the community, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tosin. Mrs. James.
Thank you very much. Uh, so I appreciate the presentations, uh, both of them, the Pasta presentation and, uh, Mrs. Martinez, the annual enrollment review. I'd like to echo a couple of things that Mrs. Tosin said. One of them is the, the unfortunate back and forth zoning that potentially could occur at Siena Crossing. That's happened in the west side before and it's, uh, very disruptive and upsetting for those families when that happens. And I know you're aware of that and I know you know that. But let's, maybe we can learn from the past and try to be creative about how we would, how we would solve that. So, um, I appreciate your consideration of that. I also have a follow-up question on the elementary schools and I know we have them numbered. But is elementary school fifty-three is funded in the current two thousand and eighteen bond? And fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six are in the future? Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so, um, so we have funding for one and we need two. Is that, I, I, I'm trying to, we need three.
We, we actually have funding for fifty-two and fifty-three and we had funding to purchase a property for fifty-four.
Okay, okay, so. So, uh, I'm wondering if there's, if there's a priority in needs, if we need, you know, given this information. If we need to look carefully at what the, the needs are in the order that we need the schools, maybe not in number order. Maybe there's a different priority order. So, uh, the need over, along the five twenty-one corridor seems very high. And to be honest with you, I'm not even quite, I would maybe also actually like to ask for a map of where these different sites are that we're looking. Or where we have schools to build, because I'm, I'm not, I can't exactly pinpoint where that is. And how they would serve either the five twenty-one corridor or the southern part of Siena or how the access would work and all of that. So I'd like to ask that. I know we've also talked about middle school fifteen, or sixteen. And that seemed to come up in the Pasta report and I'm, I know there's a triangle of land and it's somewhere. But in the, in terms of looking at the whole map, I can't quite visualize where that is. So I would like to maybe see that on a map as well. Um, I'd like to also pick up on another thing that Mrs. Tosin said and she talked about alternative programs. I think this also ties in to our, uh, losing students to charter schools. Part of it, uh, part of it is, you know, having those attractive programs. And we have some very attractive programs in Fort Bend ISD. And it occurs to me, you know, some of the charter school competitors name their schools fancy names. And they advertise right on the front of their building what they're offering, science and math, STEM, whatever it is. Maybe we could consider some of our excellent, um, academy programs and other dual language programs and things like that. And actually put a sign on the front of the campus that says, you know, whatever the program is, Math and Science Academy, Engineering Academy. P-Tech, early college high school. P-Tech, Early College High School, all of those types of things. I think that would be some natural advertisement that we could take advantage of. I'd also like to say that I heard what Mrs. Tosin said about the GT Academy, possibly an elementary one. And I'd just like to be an advocate also for the elementary schools on the west side. There are an awful lot of underutilized elementary schools on the west side. We don't have any specialized programs going on at the elementary level on that side of the district. And I also heard the PASA team report that there is a fairly large-capacity elementary charter going in that may draw students from the town west, holly drawback area. So I think perhaps the mission schools are ripe for some type of, either that's a dual language program, an early literacy center, perhaps it's a GT Academy, one on each side of the district, so those little, so the elementary kids aren't traveling too far. So those, none of those things are questions, but they are all comments related to the things that Mrs. Tosin said. I guess the other thing that's on my mind is the Lakeview Elementary rebuild. And Mrs. Martinez, I think I remember that we have a zoning change coming up for Lakeview Elementary this, for this next school year, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for mentioning that. So the zones associated with the opening of Malala and the rezoning of some areas of that are currently zoned to Lakeview, two-phase process. And the board approved both phases. The second phase will implement this fall, and that's the rezoning or the new boundary for Lakeview Elementary. And so there are area, the area of Chelsea Harbor, the multifamily housing that's right next to Chelsea Harbor and Stratford Park rezoning from Lakeview to Oyster Creek Elementary for 2021. We are sending reminder information out to community members, all of the students currently attending and their families currently attending Lakeview. And that'll be followed by specific information to those students that are impacted by a boundary change, to remind them about that. We also have information that's listed on our on our website about that. It's been, a little bit of time has passed since that approval of that boundary. And so it was timed intentionally in that way, so that when Lakeview moves out for the rebuild of the school, then those students are able to go to their newly zoned campus. And then while they are out of Lakeview Elementary, they will be hosted by Malala Elementary. So we'll have the Lakeview students and staff residing there, kind of a turnaround on on the hospitality that they received at other campuses while they were having Malala built.
Okay, well, thanks for sharing that, because I've gotten a lot of questions about that. So I'm glad that, I'm sure Malala will be excited to have them, and I'm sure they'll be excited to go there. So that's, that's great. One other comment I want to make, and that has to do with the high school and the high school rezoning and zoning process that'll take place as we think about what that's gonna look like. And I just want to say that, as I said last time, we talked about some high school rezonings, that I don't think that Highway 6 should be a, an artificial barrier or zoning line of any type. I think we should consider not using that as a boundary. So I just put that forward as something that I'm gonna be looking at when we come back with the potential high school boundaries. And then I guess my last request would be, I noticed that a few of the slides in the PASA slide deck were updated, and I wondered if we could please get the updated slide deck. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mrs. Helliger.
Thank you. I just had a quick question or request, rather. I know we've talked a lot about the types of programs that we are going to bring into the district and that we're in the planning phases of those things. I think what I would like to see is a somewhat of a project plan of the programs. You can break it out into whether it be literacy, STEM, language, whatnot, so that we can kind of see what's, what you're working on, so that we can understand that picture from a programming perspective, so that, I mean, that would help me with some of the questions that I have, because I want to make sure that I'm seeing the direction in which we're headed with the programs in the district. And I think if we have that, that view, that would be very, very helpful. And I know we still haven't identified yet where they're going to go, but at least, you know, the public can see, this is how we're changing as a, as a district. I mean, I know people now who who moved to Fort Bend ISD from HISD, and they're moving their kids back to HISD because of dual language and those kind of things. So I think we need to show people that plan about programming and what we're trying to do. Where they belong, that's a whole difference, you know, that's another discussion, but, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mrs. Tosin.
Yeah, just real quick, so I completely agree with that. I think that's a great idea, and I think it would also help us, going back to what what Grail said, and I and I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, because I think that's what you were saying, Charles, is that we we are gonna change the order of priority for the elementary schools, because 52 is the the Parks Edge School, and that's where we're not sure where that build-out's gonna be. And Sienna is, is in that 521 corridor is where, that, that's what you were referring to, correct?
No, no, ma'am. I was, so, so I want, suddenly, let me address both of those things. So we can, within an 18-month window before we have the bond election, begin construction under a reimbursement agreement. And we've done that, we actually have that. So that's what I was referring to. But I did want to respond, since you brought it up and Mrs. James brought it up, we have, the board has the latitude to authorize us to begin a school, but I, but I want to be very careful with that, because we committed to that community that that school that was in the 18-bond will be built in that community, in the Parks Edge community. We could move that school, but that could present some concerns for that community that they're not getting the school or might not get the school that they were promised. So we'd want to tread that very carefully if we make that decision. But so I think we need to, you know, if you're interested in exploring that, we can certainly bring the data for another discussion. But we might be better served to, to address community concern, to use a reimbursement agreement to get that school started in a very similar time frame.
Well, I think Sienna remembers what it's like not to get the school they were promised, because Middle School 15 was never built, and it was in the 2007 bond. So, but I do think that all that data needs to be brought to us. I think we need to look at it. So I, I come, you know, I understand what you're saying, because again, we've been there. But also, if that area's not being built out and a school's not, it's not that they're not gonna get it, but I just at least think that we need to look at it in order to do our due diligence. I I think we have to do that. So that was my, that was, so I'm glad I asked that clarifying question, because I understand the reimbursement thing, but I do think that we need to look at the data again to see where, where the schools are most needed. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Mr. Rice.
Dr. Dupree, if we were to pursue the reimbursement policy, what impact would that have on our fund balance?
Well, and Oscar, what is an elementary cost to build?
Well, it, we would be looking at a little over 30 million, you know, all in.
So the the long-range impact is none, since we'd be repaying it assuming the bond passed. But otherwise, Brian would have to calculate exactly the impact of a 30 million drawdown on fund balance, which would be substantial.
Okay, well, I want, before we make a decision, I'd like to know that, too, as part of the whole analysis. Thank you.
Based on what I'm hearing, I would expect we would bring that whole conversation back to get direction from the board about which path to go to get that school in Sienna started earlier, if that's expected.
Mrs. James.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to, I think we need the whole picture to, to make wise decisions. So thank you for bringing that information back to us.
So I did, just kind of in closing, I wanted to add a few thoughts that this made, because I want, I think it's critical, we're talking about a lot of detail here, but I think the board is picking up, and I, definitely the same thing I sensed when I saw this data from PASA and the the report that staff put together. And that is, we are an aging district. We have more significantly more underutilized campuses than over, and our growth is projected to be finished pretty much within the next 10 years. So, you know,